I gotta make sure I get it on.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So we got money from, uh, from Holly's, huh? Yeah, um, what are we talking about right now?
Uh, we just, it's in the minutes. I had to ask who is H R E L C.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion, we approve the minutes as submitted.
Yes, just a, just a few things. First thing, uh, the CMP rate for our municipal building. Uh, we've been successful in, um, re-categorizing our, our facility. Uh, so in the future, we will not have any demand charge that will be imposed upon us. In addition to that, um, CMP provided us a credit. In here, I said it's 228587, but it's slightly over $2,500 when, once it finally, um, was recalculated. Uh, because it's a credit, um, and we don't need to apply that credit to this building. I've spread that credit, um, two-thirds to the fire station and one-third to the public works department, um, over the next year. So as, as, and we've already set that up. So the, um, the credit will be just taken off their bills until it's satisfied. At that point, I'm hoping to have in place a, uh, sharing of power that's being produced here at the, uh, at the town hall, uh, and then we'll begin to, um, apply those, that additional power to those other buildings in addition to this building. So hopefully we'll be cutting all of our electrical costs pretty significantly in the future.
So we, we won't, last time we had talked about the excess power that we were creating. If I remember right, wasn't there something about we had to use it within a year?
Yes, I believe there's a stipulation that you have to use it within a year. So I'd have already reached out to CMP, um, and I'm hoping they'll get back to us here very soon. The year would be up, uh, what was it, August, October, when we really started, uh, kicking this off. So I'd have to look at the data, but, uh, we have significantly produced energy here, so we don't want to lose it if we possibly can.
And we were, we were producing energy before we opened the building.
Correct.
Yeah. Good, excellent.
Um, the old town hall building, just to give you an update where, where we are, I mean, Dan mentioned it last week and it's sort of, you know, it begins spurring on what we're, what we're trying to do. I've reached out to, I wish I had more data tonight, but, uh, Casella is going to provide us a cost to, uh, to get rid of the building once it's down. Um, still working on the demolition piece at this point. I think, you know, based on some things that I'm hearing, that once we have a clear, uh, bill of health for the building, we may be able to just tear it down ourselves as long as we have the containers to put it in and to get the, the thing removed. So, um, that's sort of the avenue that I'm working on a little bit right now, but I haven't given it a lot of time. The other piece is that I've reached out to, um, uh, environmental services to provide us an estimate or to come in and take a look at the building to see if there are any hazardous materials that need to be addressed within the building prior to demolition. They've, I've been playing phone tag with them, so, um, hopefully I'll get them down here, they'll take an assessment, provide us a report. Uh, they're certified by DEP, so we don't have an issue. If they do find something, um, then we can get it remediated. Everybody's telling me that that's pretty well been taken care of in the past, so I'm pretty confident we probably don't have much there. Um, the only thing that I'm hearing now may be the, the tiles on the floor, that may be asbestos, um, so we may have to address that. So we'll just wait to see what that's going to give us. Finally, I reached out to, uh, surplus equipment in Sanford, waiting for them to get back to me to come down and take a look at what we have in the building that they would be interested in purchasing from the town to, uh, put in their shop for, you know, other people to purchase. So, um, just waiting for them to come back. I think those are the, and then as we get going, I mean, the power will have to be disconnected and we'll have to get somebody in to take care of that. But, um, as the numbers come forward, I'll certainly share the numbers with you folks so you know where we are. We're going to need all those numbers, um, as you want to get into this before really the end of the summer, if we can, and see if we can get a, uh, public hearing and, I mean, a special town meeting and try to get some sort of direction from the townspeople as to what we want to do once we have some numbers to, to put in front of them.
Can I ask a question? Should, should this board deliberate at this point what we want to do with that town hall? I mean, I think we ought to, I mean, keep this going through, I think we're all in the same agreement, but I think we just ought to formally say, listen, you know, based on every, this is, this is just my opinion, based on everything that we've seen, based on everything that we've heard, it's my opinion that we should move forward with demolition, demolition of that, the old town building. And I would make that as, I would, I guess I'd make that as a motion. That way this board can have consensus and then Keith can move on, we can relate that to the public and say, this is what we're doing and we'll go from there.
You don't want to wait for a cost to, to demolish, demolish the bill?
I don't know, Jason, I don't know, we can see what the cost, will we run into many environmental issues there before we decide that?
I don't think we're gonna, but I.
But if we, if the cost comes here or the cost comes there, what are we gonna do? We're just not gonna let that building sit, right?
You know, we may be able to do it in pieces too, you know, at some point, you know, remediate, shut the power off, get all the water turned off, get all that done.
But I mean, does anybody on the board want to do anything else other?
I definitely don't. I would love to see that building crushed, but my, I, I don't want it to come back, us to make that a motion and then this DEP, uh, the environmental place says, oh, it's going to be $250,000 to mitigate the asbestos, I don't think, it's not going to be that.
So then we cut and figure out what we're gonna do at that point, right? I mean, I, I just think, you know, we ought to, we owe some direction and, you know, we've hashed this and hashed this and hashed this and I, you know, if we all feel that.
Yeah, I think I have the direction. I, I've talked to you, I've talked to you all.
We've told, we've told the general public that we're going to take all your information and we've never officially said, this is what we're gonna do with it. That's all I'm saying.
This is the direction that Keith is headed in right now, the first step. We need to know what it's going to cost and then we can say, yeah, we're gonna demo.
Yeah.
Who we're gonna spend $200,000 fixing it up and using it.
I think we give Keith a motion that says, go figure out how much it's gonna cost and then at that point, once we figure out all the numbers, we say, okay, let's move forward or no, it's just, this is just too cost prohibitive. We're gonna tear it down one way or another, we're not, just not gonna let that building sit, right? It just, that, that, that becomes campground mode, well, not as bad, but, you know, so.
You made a motion, like, is there a second?
I'll second it just to shut him up.
Nothing will shut me up, I know that right now.
That was the thing, that, that this board, what's it supposed to do?
That, that Keith moves forward with getting cost on, on demolishing the building.
Okay. That's a motion to the second, for Jason, for the discussion. All in favor? Here we go.
Um, yeah, I think at your last meeting, I talked a little bit about the transfer station reuse room. And I guess I must have spurred on a little hornet's nest with some of our taxpayers in town because, um, I had a visit from, um, Mr., uh, was it Mel? Mel, forgive me if I don't pronounce.
Valantiqua?
Valantiqua, yeah. Came in to see me, um, and at that point, you know, we, we talked, I, I was very frank with him as to what I thought should be happening with the reuse room, which was not what he wanted to see. I provided to him a series of my business cards and I indicated to him, I said, you know, I haven't heard from anybody, so here are my business cards, if you're up to the town transfer station and wish to spread them out, feel free to do so. So, and that happened, I think, uh, I think he came in, that happened on a Wednesday. On Thursday, I had, uh, I had some emails and at the end of the, end of the time, I had over 11 folks that had contacted me in reference to it. Mel had put together a suggestion list, would like to see the reuse room used, and I provided, uh, in a nutshell, the, the list that he provided to us, uh, to try to get the reuse room reopened. I think that's his goal. One of the things he talked about was to limit the hours that it's open, just strictly have it Wednesday, one to four, something along those lines, uh, so folks would be very limited about when they come and so we don't have a hodgepodge of things that were coming in, we can, we can see what's coming in. Um, he, he suggested having a large bulletin board to advertise no large items. Um, I spoke to him about how time-consuming the large items were. He thought that we could eliminate them and maybe just have a bulletin board or someplace that somebody could put a picture, I have this item, this is my telephone number, if you'd wish to contact me, we can arrange the times to get it picked up. So, and that would eliminate the large items being there. I talked about the clutter on the floor and his suggestion was to paint some large lines on the floor to demarcate where the alleyway needs to always stay open. And then post new rules on what we accept and what we don't accept. And then finally, just to make sure that the reuse room is for Arundel residents only was his final, because he's indicated to me that on several occasions, he's saying he knows of people from out of town that have been there, either dropping things off or trying to pick things up. So, and that was his suggestions. Um, I, I keep coming back, I mean, I had, certainly had, uh, 11 people that were very enthusiastic about getting the reuse room, uh, back open. But for me, 11 people compared to 4,800 people in the community doesn't seem to be a, a large, a group, maybe I'll get more. Um, I know I gave him a bunch of my business cards, so, uh, I perhaps may get more, but I haven't at this point. So, not sure where you want me to go with it. If you want me to try to institute some of these changes and, uh, bring that forward or just sort of wait for more data from residents before we make any, I would, what I would do is if we, whatever we do tonight, I will let these folks know. So they're well aware that, um, where we are in this process, we may not be ready to open, may not have enough people to give us enough opinions of what they think should happen. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm game for anything at this point. You know my position, I would not like to see it reopened and I think I've, I've sort of outlined that, um, but I'll do what's, what we think is wise for the community.
Well, I think these three hours, I think, I, I would like to see it stay open, but again, only these three hours. Don't open it on Saturday because that, the reuse, the, the transfer station is, is very, very busy on Saturday. But I also think that if we're gonna have it open those three hours, there needs to be a parking space for anybody using the reuse room. Don't just drive up there and park in front and block the traffic. I think the bulletin board is a very good idea and having the sign up there, also painting the lines on the floor, so they don't come in and drop stuff anyplace.
I think that you're gonna get some wicked feedback if we only open it Wednesday, one to four. You're gonna get people that are gonna say, well, gee, you know, Saturday is the only day that I can go. You know, a lot of the information that got sent to you came, probably came from on the Arundel chatter Facebook page because they put your name out there, they said, contact the town manager. And there was quite a discussion about that and some of the things that we brought up about people hanging around, jumping in there, were also reiterated by other people. So it was kind of a mix for and against. But what, to me, if, if we ever open this thing up, I think somebody needs to be there all the time while it's open. And, and you need to monitor that stuff, what comes in and what comes out, you know, what's acceptable to come in, what's acceptable to come out, because it's gonna end up being a bunch of junk in there again. I'm not in favor of opening it up, but, you know, one of the comments was, geez, I have all kinds of stuff since COVID. Well, therein lies the problem, all kinds of stuff since COVID, they're gonna have all kinds of junk that they're gonna bring in there and I'll throw it in there and then guess what? We're gonna have to deal with it.
Take it down to Goodwill.
Yeah. If it, if it's truly not junk, then, yeah, you can give it to Goodwill.
Put it on, yeah, put it on Arundel Chatter or something, they'll, there's all kinds of stuff on there.
Yeah, put it on freaking, you put it on, you know, uh, Arundel Yard Sale or Saco Yard Sale or something like that, free for the taking or whatever, you know, I mean, just.
Or out beside the road, free for the taking.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of other avenues and.
Is that gentleman that took your card, is he, um, amenable to finding people if it's open, say Wednesday, one to four, Saturday, one to four, to finding people who will be willing to monitor it on those two days?
I think, I think he is to a certain extent, uh, willing to maybe look for folks that may be interested to, to help. But it, I think he reiterated the same thing is that folks that are volunteering to do that may not be the, um, uh, the most consistent about volunteering. And so that, it becomes an issue. So I think if, perhaps if we discuss it more, that, you know, that the, um, that the community may be interested, but we need to have more solidified, uh, unified volunteer system to, to monitor and to adhere to the rules, then maybe that would spur on some more folks. But, um, I think folks that, uh, you know, they remember how it used to be and they, I think a lot of folks are saying, just why don't you open it like it always used to be? And I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
Because it was a mess.
Yeah, it was a mess.
What are some of the large items that were in there?
I'd have to talk to Roger. I mean, the last time, yeah, there were treadmills and old bikes, parts and ski, you know, the skis, uh, cross-country skis, downhill skis.
Old color gloves.
Yeah, there was all kinds of stuff in there.
I see verge. Big pieces of verge.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's just, you know, I think there are other avenues that might be better suited. I mean, there's just with, especially with social media today, I mean, there's so many different sites that are available to get rid of stuff. Facebook Marketplace.
Not everybody has access to that stuff though, you gotta.
Most people do.
Fine, I'm, yeah, I'm with you, but I don't want to discourage the 11 people that have come forward either, that we're not listening to them, you know? That's, I mean, that is a third of the people that showed up for our town meeting.
I guess that's the way to look at it, look at it that way.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm for it, I guess. I, I think these people look forward to kind of finding a knickknack and taking it home and cleaning it up and it gives them something that, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm with you on the junk, but I, I think to touch on Velma's parking thing, I, I don't know how we could do it, but the one thing that discourages me is like the person that parks in front of the recycling bin and goes into the resource room for like 45 minutes and it's like, that can't be done, that.
And then they don't back in.
Yeah, clogs everything up.
They drive up in front of the door and just park there.
And on a Saturday, when there's, you know, a lot of people going there, you have two or three people in that reunion, then all, you know, it becomes, to me, it becomes a very dangerous situation with all the traffic there and, you know, where to park.
I mean, I can see if, I mean, while Charlie's been taking the stuff out of the truck to, to get rid of, I'll jump out, go in the reuse room and just glance around, see if anything is interesting. And by the time he's done, I'm back in the truck, probably with a book, and we're gone. But, um, I mean, that's one person. Somebody else might go in and find, you know, oh, that, a lot of the glassware over on that table, so they're over there looking at it, turning it upside down, looking to see if there's a mark on the bottom and.
Looking for a plug to see if the air conditioner works.
Yeah.
That's a large item that we should not allow in there.
Use the, the air conditioners and refrigerators, put on the ramp out back so we can take the, yeah.
So whatever, I think we gotta have somebody to lease this.
Yeah, I agree.
That's the problem. Find the people who are assertive enough, you know, that's another problem too. We can't take that, we don't take that.
You don't have somebody there full-time whenever it's open, you can, you have a guy.
And again, mark the floor, have the signs there that say what we take, what we don't take.
I think what I'm sensing initially off everybody's discussion here is that, and I think that's gonna be the hardest thing, would be to try to get folks that are dedicated to spend time there. If we can get commitments of people that are willing to be there, maybe it's one day, may, maybe we open it Wednesdays and somebody takes the first Wednesday and somebody else has got the third, second, third Wednesday and they're there from one to four and they give a commitment to us, then maybe it's worth giving it a try. But if we don't get the commitment of volunteerism, then I think that we're right back.
Right, exactly. And we, we try on a Wednesday and see how it goes.
Say how it goes.
Right, see how it goes and make sure.
And the person who, who says, well, I can only show up on Saturday, say, well, we can't open it on Saturday, are you willing, would you like to go up there and volunteer to stay on Saturday so that we can open it on Saturday? Because otherwise, we can't open it.
But I, I do like his suggestion of limiting the hours that it's open. I think that instead of just having it carte blanche and anybody goes up there. But I think the other thing is getting the people that are committed to it. If we can't get that, then I, I think we're, we're gonna be right back down to the same. All the other things could fall into place if people are committed to be there.
Yeah, how does Kenyatta do theirs? Cause they have one of us at the dump.
I, I have no idea.
I think they have a, they have a place up at there.
I've seen people get into fisticuffs over reuse stuff.
They move open stuff in front of the door when it's not open, if they know it's open on Wednesday.
Right. That's a good point, Phil. Okay, so it's just a work in progress. I'll see what more information I get from the public as we move through this. Hopefully we get more people engaged in giving us comments.
Okay.
Thanks.
The continuing store with our acoustics in this place.
Yeah, I, you know, I, after, I think that we, we all talked about it a little bit after the annual town meeting that, and I had a few, uh, folks come up to me and talk, talk to me about that we needed to do something. I think we're all aware of that. The issue I had, uh, and I think you all had it at one point, is the $11,000 price tag that, that our contractor had placed on, on doing something here. I just began, the information I gave you tonight was just me looking at acoustic panels that could be purchased, um, the cost to purchase them, uh, once you purchase them, you own them, you can't return them. Uh, the, the fabric that goes on them is the same fabric that would come from Guilfet Industries here in Maine, the same stuff that you've looked at before. I've given you a couple alternatives. I think that, uh, you know, we can perhaps get some folks that have got some building experience to come in here and we identify where we want them and we hang these things on the walls and, um, I'm thinking as the, as the, um, contractor did and the architect is to, is to start something underneath the windows and go across that back wall and maybe something between the, the, uh, the televisions here on this wall and see how that works. You know, maybe, maybe do, uh, a little of it and see how close we can get, uh, to get that accomplished and then move, and then if it doesn't accomplish it, we can purchase some more and go along the sidewalls and, and, uh, take a little bit at a time, uh, to, to get the sound that we need. That was my suggestion, my thoughts. Not sure where you all are on that, but. My, I should have colored yours, but you can see the color of, these were, the blue ones they have, they have brown, they have gray. The brown and the, the blue that, uh, that I had in the office is probably a little lighter than this, but, I mean, that blue wouldn't look bad on that wall, in my opinion.
Have we had an acoustic person tell us where the sound is bouncing from? I mean, is it bouncing from the walls, is it bouncing from the ceiling, is it bouncing from, I mean, where's it bouncing from?
Well, that's your biggest issue, Velma. You get an acoustical engineer in here, you, $11,000 won't even pay for him to tell you what's going on. So, I mean, we've got.
Jason, where's the sound bouncing from?
We've got acoustical panels on the ceilings.
Yeah.
So we've tried to mitigate that a bit.
Right, a cover our head.
Yeah, we purchased these rugs in the hope that that would bounce some of the, stop prohibiting the.
That's not doing it.
Uh, it's not completing it, that's for sure.
It's helping, but not enough.
Right, so now we've, we've gotta do something on the walls, I think that's our next alternative. Thoughts? Where we should go, what do you think we should do? I think we should purchase our own stuff and then.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And I think the medium set makes more sense because they're the larger panels, two-by-fours.
Yeah, I, I think the medium set is the way to go initially and then if we have to add more, then we add more.
I think.
I would say two medium sets. You know, eight panels there and eight panels behind us.
Or might as well buy one large set because that's the same.
Well, you get the smaller ones, which I don't think are gonna be as effective. That was my, yeah, so you get eight of the two-by-twos.
Well, the medium set, you get eight two-by-fours and the large set, you get eight two-by-fours and eight two-by-twos.
Right, I don't think the two-by-twos is gonna do what we want.
You can put the two-by-twos underneath that, you know, up on top there, two-by-twos up over there.
Above the panels that are already there?
Yeah, and then, and then scatter the other ones, you know, you can put one, two, three, four, maybe five, six, seven, eight. Cause I, cause I don't think it's gonna be enough. You could buy one set of the, even the smallest, I don't think it's gonna be enough.
Well, the, the issue is that we can always, you know.
Yeah, but I think the two-by-twos give you, uh, an opportunity to, to put them in certain areas, you know, you get some nice small ones, but then we've got some big space that we can put the two-by-four, right?
So do you think buying one large set, one medium set to start?
No, I think we start with one large set. We start with one large set, we get eight two-by-fours and we can put those out here and a two-by-two we can put up top.
I, I think you're gonna use all eight two-by-fours on that one wall alone.
Pretty much.
I think so.
On which wall?
You're gonna have four panels underneath basically each window over there. That's gonna chew up all your large, you'll have nothing for this wall.
Right.
And then we take the, I, I think we still need some over there, some over there, but I think we're gonna need some back here.
What's the width of those windows?
Maybe right above us.
I would say that that length of that window is probably six feet, five, five and a half.
Yeah, but these, I'm looking at that thinking, if you're gonna put two panels underneath the window, you'd really put like a panel and a half or fit under each window, otherwise your panel's going to be.
Yeah, I think you need four, four and four, you know?
Put two-by-twos right underneath there.
And then if we bought one of each, that would leave us another eight big ones for like one large, one medium? Yeah, if you do it on a rainy day, I'll hang them for you.
Well, you give me a rainy day and I'll. Well, you give me a rainy day and I'll.
Yeah, I know. Buy a rainy day right now.
I make a motion, we buy, we buy one large set and one medium set. 16, 1700 bucks. Seventeen or it will be taxed.
I think no matter how many we have, we'll certainly use them.
They're the same as you saw too. They had the fiberglass batting inside and they're wrapped in the Guilford fabric, so.
Which color?
This color.
That blue would go good. The blue is almost like.
Yeah, I think that color.
I think the blue will be fine here. I think we go with the brown or some other lighter color here. It's that.
I think that's fine. Same color all the way around.
Okay.
Whatever.
It's fine with me too. So, you know, I know the architects and the contractors want this aesthetically pleasing, but for me, I want it functional, you know?
I would say from a board, if we let the town manager choose the color and the public hates it, then we can just point, you know, when they start complaining, we can say, well, Keith picked the color.
I'll amend my motion.
I didn't tell you.
We have a motion to apply one medium set, one large set.
Yep.
Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Further discussion? Favor that? Give it a shot.
And this will come from the account of the municipal.
It'll be from the bond. Yeah, we have around 67,000 left on the bond right now.
That was a question that I had later on.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Well, you can always call me on those, you know.
No, it's going to be part of the discussion I'm having down the road.
Yes, I have two. One for map four lot six and another for map four lot 36-7. One is a trailer in the trailer park. The other one is Holly's Gas.
Want them one at a time? Yeah. So I'll make a motion, we accept. Sorry about the numbers again.
Lot four, lot, map four, lot six would be HRE Arundel LLC.
Yep, HRE Arundel LLC.
Second.
And I'll make a motion, we accept map four lot 36 A07.
Okay. Who was that one came?
It's Amy and Robert Jellison.
Chatter Oaks.
I believe you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had any other. Yeah, if you had any other questions, I.
Just a couple of questions, Keith. One of them had to do with leases. Do you know how that, is that going to affect us at all?
I don't believe it's going to affect us.
Nope.
That was one of the questions that I asked the auditors. I think it's just a functional change by, it's being imposed. They did not give me a warning. They didn't say that it was going to affect us in any way. Just a way of reporting it, that's all.
And just for clarification, they talk about using the fund balance. They said the fund balance appears to be above the relevant ranges, nor to the bottom. So do I take it that we're sitting pretty and there's, not that we want to, but if we want to go more than the 300,000, we had room to do that?
I think what the auditor is telling you is that we have a healthy, we have a healthy, very, very good balance at this point. I was surprised that our fund balance actually went up from 19 to 20, more than I had anticipated it was going to be. So that's good news, that a variety of ways that could have happened. Additional revenue that we collected that we hadn't anticipated, as well as being very mindful of the expenses that we've had over the course of the year. So they all contribute to that, that fund balance. So a roundabout way, yes, you probably could, I would.
I'm not saying.
I'd be a little more, I'd like to be a little reluctant about it until we have, you know, take a higher look at it.
Yeah, I mean, at this point now, we're good, we're good where we are.
Right, we talked about using some of the fund balance. We are going to care on it.
Right.
Correct.
Right, exactly. And, you know, that gives us an opportunity to be able to, depending on what goes.
Correct.
Yep. Good, that's all I had.
Any other questions? I'll sleep reading.
Yeah, yeah.
Move a little warrants payroll and.
Yes, move.
Second.
Dan's got some additional mileage here, he wants to talk about.
Yeah. Yeah, so a while back, I was asked, this was, I don't know, five months or so ago, I was asked about, you know, when COVID gets all done, are you guys going to continue to use Zoom? We like the idea of Zoom, blah, blah, blah. And at the time I had said, well, you know, it's my preference to continue to use Zoom. But in that time, to Keith's point, you know, he made, we've had a ton of Zoom meetings and the participation on Zoom has really been.
One, at the most.
Yeah, well, we had a couple, but. So I guess I just wanted to make to see, you know, I know Keith said that he didn't, you know, this meeting wasn't on Zoom. And I just want to find out what the board's thought was, is that we continue to not use Zoom when there's a board feel that we want to use Zoom. At this point, I guess I'm okay with not using it. I know that at one point I said, yeah, I want to, but participation has proved that it's.
Well, there has been some developments to that. There's, you know, the governor, there's been some new legislation that's come down the pipe in terms of these remote opportunities. I'm still reading it and there's been some legal thoughts about it, but essentially they're encouraging the bodies to get back together, to carry on your business. If there's an event that, say you're on vacation and you won't be here, you, via Zoom, you could, if we have a policy in place, you could still participate in those, in those meetings as long as, if we're Zooming them, the public has the ability to hear all the discussions and that there is no more information that's handed out to the body after the Zoom, after the Zoom information has gone out to the public. You know, right now I put all our packets online. So if I added to the packet, as I do frequently, that information could not be shared because it wouldn't, it wasn't out into the Zoom meeting. So there are some exceptions that you guys could participate, but essentially they want you all back together, carrying on the town's business. And I think that's the way we, I think that's the way we should go. We should be here and, you know. I don't mind, right now I'm recording it. I'll put this meeting on YouTube so folks can see it, as we've done in the past with all of our meetings, trying to get them there, so.
I can just, you know, the reason I bring it up is I foresee, you know, that somebody is going to ask the question, hey, I noticed that, you know, I wasn't on Zoom. What's going on?
Right.
And I wanted to make sure that whatever my answer is, it's not Dan DuBois's answer, it's the answer from the town and the selectmen all agree or whatever. So, you know, I just, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Right now there's that grace period. It really doesn't go into effect until the end of July, I think. So, you know, we could, we essentially, if you guys said to me, you know, keep them on Zoom until the time lapses and then we'll go back, we'll do that. I mean, I have no objections to that. I just thought that, you know, our participations were low. Hopefully we'd get some, you know, maybe people would come. We've got a great facility, they can come and enjoy our company, I guess.
Are you seeing?
The, I think the issues that we're going to have, and I've already spoken to the planning board chairman about it, is the planning board loves the Zoom meetings. They've had great participation remotely from contractors and businesses that wanted to participate. But I've sort of broke the news to them that they're going to have to come back together as well, so.
And they can still use Zoom if they want.
Yes, they can.
Right.
Yeah, they can, but if they're making decisions and folks are on Zoom, they can't be sharing any more information. I think that's the other stickler in that thing too, is that folks have the opportunity to see that. So if they put their packets together, put them out electronically, if something else comes in, that may, that may abate what they're doing on that particular discussion that evening. That's the way I see it, Tom. I don't know if you've read it enough. I think so too, yes.
Yeah. Is it possible, like I, one thing that I think would be cool is, like the meetings that we have public hearings. Is it possible just to have Zoom for like the public hearing so that, you know, maybe the public could jump on and if someone had a complaint and couldn't make it to the meeting or had a question, and then just when the public hearing is over, just, you know, Zoom's done and.
You know, I think that, I think that's a possibility. I think you can set a policy that says that. Yeah.
We couldn't, we couldn't do anything that required us voting from the public.
Right.
Right, but we certainly can, some informational.
It's very rare that we ever change like a public hearing. That's usually.
Right, once they're there, we're seeking input from the public on that. And that would be a great opportunity for folks that not necessarily want to be here for our entire meeting, maybe just want to, you know, public hearing.
Yeah.
Remote participation to somebody who's not available because you're on vacation or something like that.
Right.
Think about.
Right. Yeah, I would certainly like to have that opportunity.
Yeah, you take a lot of vacations.
I've missed one meeting in nine years.
Well, I want to make sure that we can get you when you're at camp.
Nine years, one meeting. How many meetings?
Yeah, quite a few.
Maybe we ought to think about a policy then.
Okay. I'll start putting something together. We've got a few weeks to discuss it.
The next item, very serious issue. At the transfer station, there has been some complaints of the personnel, the Casella personnel, making sexist remarks to women at the transfer station. Wow, you look awful nice today, you know, and.
Okay.
And people have said, I give my trash to my next door neighbor because I go there and I get charged X amount. She goes there with even more trash and she gets charged a lot less. So, you know, I mean, it's one or two people here. I asked for some specifics, I didn't get actual specifics, but what the comment was made was this happened twice on a Saturday. My, you look awful pretty today. And, you know, it could be nonchalantly, but we can't be doing that in today's day and age to somebody, you know. And other people are kind of chiming into, yeah, something's going on. So I think we need to have a discussion with Casella. And again, things get weighed, things don't get weighed. There's just no consistency there. Right. You know, so we need to get back to it. I know we're getting a hell of a deal there and I hate to screw that up, but we've got to be consistent, right? If they're going to not weigh me and weigh Nomer or vice versa, you've got to weigh everybody. That's, that's the way it is. I think we need to get them to follow those rules.
Scale doesn't work. I've seen that with us two Saturdays, but the thing is not, they don't even use it.
Really?
Really.
There are two scales there.
They only use, I asked them about it, why would you scale it? And said, we get the batteries in it or something like that.
Well, they. They have to tell us, you know.
Well, listen, you know, the skills don't use, don't work and they do, you know.
Well, what's happened in the past oftentimes is that they'll use the scale. Roger would walk there and make sure the scales are operating properly, the batteries are refreshed. They'll leave them on all the, all the time. So if they get done on Saturday, they don't shut them off. So come back Wednesday, batteries are dead. So they got, you know, so I, I'll reach out to Casella again and tell them the concerns. I've heard the, I've heard the non-weighing concern or not charging appropriately. And I've, I've alluded that to them on several occasions that, you know, or, or they're, or they're throwing it away and they're saying, oh, yeah, you only had one punch here today. They may have had four or five bags, so, you know, the resident is, you know, getting a deal there, but Casella is actually losing money.
Right. If there's an issue with batteries, it can't be very hard to retro go to put a solar thing up there.
Or we'll give us a little batteries off, all they got to do is replace the battery. Okay. I, I, I had heard the sexist remark in a different tone today. I won't share it on camera, but I'll share it with you privately, so.
We need to, we need to look at that, that's really unacceptable.
Hey, on that note, I mean, I hate to bring it up again, but was there ever a final number discussed as far as curbside pickup in town? Because.
No, not yet.
I just feel like.
Right, I've told, I've instructed them to continue to work on that. They, they needed roads from us. I know they're working on the road structure. They're working on one day a week that they would be picking up trash exclusively. One day a week they'd be picking up recycling. I've told them that we're looking at, and they advised it too, fully automated truck system. We'd have to buy the cans, the, and then sell them to the public here.
Right.
So yes, it's still in the works, but they haven't given me any numbers yet, so.
I feel like in the last two years, we've dealt with more crap from the transfer station than anything else in town.
Yep.
No fun then.
You know, I mean, to Tom's point, you know, we're getting a heck of a deal there.
I know we are, but, I mean, if our taxes were up, what, 50 bucks a year and we could get curbside pickup? I mean.
Yep, if we're showing, I think it would be.
We have a dumpster in Austin, please, and they pick it up once a week. When I talked to that guy once and they still do the old fashioned way, pick them up, dump it in. And he sounded very interested in looking at a quote for our town. I told him we have about 50 miles of road and maybe 4,000 residents. And he was very interested in looking at it. And he's got four or five other towns that they do.
This is somebody that's not Casella. They're independent contractors and they just come through, Phil, and pick up?
Yeah, yeah, it's not Casella. It's a private guy, he's out of, he's in the standard area.
Okay.
And they pick us up once a week.
Does he do recycling too, Phil? Or no?
No, no. Everything goes in. This is Tom, does pick up everybody, who paid $600 a tour.
So what else you got, Dan?
Yeah, let's do that for Dan. So I, you know, I've been listening to meetings and the sound quality is certainly better, but there are a lot of times we can't hear what's going on. And when, if you're doing a Zoom and somebody's listening in, at least they can say, hey, I can't hear you, but not that anybody listens anyways. But I think we need to do something better for the sound quality. I mean, I talked to Keith a few months ago about reaching out to the company that we used to get an idea of, we get different mics, you know, they make these tabletop mics. And I thought it might be better off to put, you know, like three tabletop mics here, a tabletop mic, tabletop mic there. They, they receive the sound quality better, they're much better than these types of mics and you don't have to be on them like this all the time, right? We can be this far away. And I just wanted to ask the board what their thought was. I asked for a price just out of curiosity, you know, two mics are 1,500 bucks. And then I asked about trading these things in and he said, well, we could probably do something like that. And then I asked about trading these things in and he said, well, we could probably do something like that. But before I went any further, I wanted to talk to you guys on the board and see what your thoughts were. I don't think that this setup works very well. For some people, we can hear well, a lot of times if you go listen, you can't, you can't hear. And some people just don't like to do this, I mean, just, it's, it's not. So I, I would like to pursue that a little further, maybe get a quote, but it's really up to you guys, see what your thoughts were.
It's no good having the video if you can't hear it.
Yeah.
Keep working on it, Dan, I think, that's what I think. Uh, you know, now that we're going to put the acoustics in, maybe the, the, the new mics is the way to go. I, I, you know, I thought the eight mics would be enough. I don't think it will be enough. We may be going to trade in some, but keep some of the little ones.
Oh, yeah, I, I thought we'd keep a couple of these.
Yeah.
You know, to put up, you know, on a pedestal or whatever.
Right.
But, you know, if we were to put three or four up here, you know, put them right up here.
Yep.
And then two out there, I think we'd be able, and Mike said that those mics work very, very well.
Okay.
He didn't, I was looking for a demo, he didn't have the demo. He said they covered it all up there and stuff. I was hoping to try the demo and try it, but I don't know, I just, you know. Video was great, but the sound is, is tough and we're going, people are asking more about this, you know? People are asking about, gee, you know, how, how come the minutes aren't up? There was a complaint about the planning board minutes weren't up on YouTube.
Yeah, I saw that.
Two days after, come on, give them a break, you know, it's, so, all right, I'll, I'll keep looking.
Okay.
I do have one more item. Well, you know, landscaping, what's, what's going on with the landscaping stuff?
Haven't heard, haven't heard any more. We had one inquiry, I haven't got, I haven't received a, a price on that. I think once, if I received the price, then I'd have an idea of where, what kind of financial commitment we would have to be making. But I'm not opposed to putting it back out to bid with the grass cutting and the, in the fertilizing package in it. And I'd be more than happy to go ahead and do that now.
I think we should do that.
Okay.
A full, a full landscaping package go out, see if we can get more people to come back.
Sure. I, you know, I've got a bunch there, so I'll go ahead and put that back together and stick it out. We did put some fertilizer down, both front and back. Don't know, I don't think we've had enough rain to really, you know, help in any way whatsoever, so. We did, we did buy an attachment to our brand new Bobcat and cut the grass, tall grass that was underneath the, in the right of way that belongs to ACT and then underneath the solar trackers. So we're going to be able to solve that issue without asking our good friend at the end of the aisle down there to bring his tractor and do some more cutting. He's done that in the past for us, but I think we've got it under control now.
Thank you for.
I would like to add one question. How are we moving on across the road? Maybe it's ridiculous, damage ridiculous.
I had a, I had a very spirited discussion with the, with the company that caused the damage, indicated to them that, you know, hey, you got a quote. He thought the quote was too high and I said, well, that's the quote. So he said he was going to, he's going to honor it, so we'll see. He's indicated to us he'll honor it. That's what he told me verbally on the phone. He'll honor the quote. We'll see. The saga isn't over yet, Phil.
Anything else, folks?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
At 8:39 PM. I want to tie into the school board meeting.